All right, good evening. It is 7:02 on September 14th, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I want to note for the record, this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I would note for the record, in attendance tonight for the Board are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Joe Fisher. First item on the agenda, oh, sorry. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and face the flag of our nation.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I believe we have two sets of minutes to be approved tonight. Liz, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Joe, are you ready to proceed?
I am.
That I take a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes dated August 23rd, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second, and if needed, further discussion. All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Motion carries, I'm an aye as well, and motion carries unanimously. Is there a second motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated August 31st, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider amending the hours of operation for six special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses issued to Untold Brewing for the Green at Derby Street Shops from the current hours of 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., to the hours of 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 17th, September 24th, October 1st, October 8th, October 15th, and October 29th, 2022. I see Mike Dyer here. Mike, good evening.
Good evening.
Come on up to the mic. Mike, if you could just state your name and address for the record and just let us know why you want to amend the hours.
Absolutely. Mike Dyer, co-owner of Untold Brewing, 156 Union Street, Hingham. Pretty simply, it gets dark earlier. We, I think in hindsight, we probably would have suggested an earlier opening hour and a later closing hour, and then just worked within the such during the course of the season. At this point, our team is breaking down in the dark in a parking lot that isn't particularly well lit, and we're obviously seeing people arrive a little bit earlier in the day now that it is getting darker earlier. So that is simply just adjusting kind of for seasonal schedule as well as arrival at Derby Street Shops.
Excellent. Tom, has the chief reviewed the application? Any concerns or?
He has, and there are no concerns.
Excellent, great. So Mike, how have your operations been this summer?
They've been incredibly smooth. Like last year, we've had no issues. It's been well received. We continue to do a mix of family programming as well as community programming. Music on Saturdays has been successful. It's worked out really well.
Great. And at times, I've been up there, it's been, seems to me, to be very successful as well. So congratulations to you and your entire team.
Thank you very much, sir.
Return to my colleagues' questions. Joe?
Sure. Mike, I mean, this makes sense. I do note that in addition to making this earlier, you're expanding the hours from seven to eight hours of operation.
Yeah, it's a slight adjustment. I think mainly from the perspective of just trying to be open a little bit earlier during the day. We're finding that people are showing up typically between 12 and 1:00 now while we're currently setting up, and we're having to turn people away and tell them to come back later. The mall hours at Derby are typically 11 to 9:00.
Right.
And so we're just trying to be a little more in line with the current mall hours.
And there's no parking issues or traffic concerns?
Absolutely not.
Okay, great. Thank you. No other questions?
Great, Liz?
No questions. I think it's run really smoothly and successfully, so I have no concerns about the change in time.
Thank you very much.
Great. Any questions from anyone, from the public? All right, seen. Now, with that out, take a motion?
I'll move to approve the request to amend the hours of operation for six special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses issued to Untold Brewing LLC for the Green at Derby Street Shops from the current hours of 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., to the hours of 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 17th, the 24th, October 1st, October 8th, October 15th, and October 29th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second, and if needed, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. Mike, good luck. Congratulations. Before you go, Mike, how was your, how was your other endeavor going up at Derby Street?
It's going well. Construction is well underway at this point. We are on pace to come back and see you, probably in about three weeks.
Great.
The state ABCC has come through and done their inspection as of this week, so all things are moving well over there.
Excellent, great. Well, I know the community is very excited for you and Courtney.
Yes.
It's going to be a great partnership, and we're looking forward to seeing that come, come to fruition, so.
Thank you very much, yes, as well.
Best of luck with next week, so.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great night, Mike. Good seeing you, as always.
Thank you. Good seeing you, too.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages licenses to Hingham Youth Football for the Hingham Youth Football Fall Fundraiser to be held at Hingham Shipyard on Saturday, September 17th, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And I believe we have Michelle LaBretton with us this evening. Michelle, how are you?
Hi, everybody. How you doing?
Doing great. How are you tonight?
Great. Working mom, I'm in McDonald's parking lot, got my car, go right in the mall.
Excellent, excellent. Well, Michelle, I know, I know that this event is very similar to the one that you held last year, but just give us a brief overview of what you want to do and what your plans are for this year.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your time tonight, too. We have, right now, we've got 150 tickets sold for a Hingham Youth Football fundraiser and fundraiser at the Beth, as you mentioned, this Saturday, the 17th, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. The Beth is our, they have our tip certifications and all the licensing, they're willing with reliability. It will be on the lawn next to the restaurant. We do not have a tent this year. I think Mother Nature looks to cooperate, thankfully. We have put in for police detail, which was approved. The funds go to the more equipment for safety for the program, and that's about it.
Excellent, Michelle, thank you. Tom, does, has the chief reviewed the application or any concerns?
He has, and he has no concerns.
Great. A couple of quick comments from me, Michelle. Well, two of those 150 tickets that are sold are to my wife and I, so looking forward to seeing you on Saturday night. Want to, you know, extend my appreciation to you and Cindy for the tremendous amount of work that you, you two, put into this event. You know, I want to say that it's a huge fundraiser for the program, and I know a lot of work's been put into it, so want to encourage folks to attend and, and my appreciation for what's been put into it, and hopefully Saturday, the weather's good, and hopefully the big turnout. So that's all I've got.
Thank you so much.
Let me turn to Liz and see if you have any questions.
No questions. I know that the Chief Jones had requested a detail, so thank you for organizing that, Michelle. I know you've done these events in the past, and they've been smooth and successful, so wishing you lots of success on Saturday.
Joe?
Thank you.
Yep, I've got no questions. I reviewed this. I would just wish we could change the name that we're issuing the license to. You know, issuing a liquor license to Hingham Youth Football sort of is a little bit of an oxymoron. So, Hingham Youth Football supporters, parents, but it's, it's a great program. Unfortunately, I am going to be out of state when this happens, but I wish you the best of success. No questions, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the members of the public? Not seen any. I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Hingham Youth Football for the Hingham Youth Football Fall Fundraiser to be held at Hingham Shipyard on Saturday, September 17th, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Is there need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. Michelle, best of luck on Saturday. Go get Jake some burger and french fries.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right. Take care. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the Third Amendment to the agreement with Palmeroy Associates LLC to complete Phase 3 of the Owners Project Manager Services for the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility. I believe we have Kevin Whalen on the line with us tonight. Kevin?
Yes?
How are you?
Welcome. Thank you, everybody. Yes, I'm here. I'm here. So, this request is to approve the Third Amendment of the Owner Project Manager Services. The Owner Project Services were procuring in the fall of 2020 under the RFQ process. The Owner Project Managers Services are for the oversight of design, construction plans for all the different projects that are going on over at the Country Club and the master plan. This amendment, as detailed in Exhibit A that you have, is for the services through the completion of the maintenance building construction, and this amendment is for an additional $125,204, and they will provide construction oversight supervision through the end of the maintenance building project. It is not to exceed a total of $271,347.50. The contract term runs through the August, August 31st, 2023. So, it's pretty straightforward. It's just an extension as the services that they provide continues to go along, we have to extend the contract to account for, you know, the additional services that they have been providing.
Kevin, thank you. Let me see if anybody has any questions. Joe?
Yeah, Kevin, if, can you just explain, because I'm, I'm not sure I'm following. Is this a, an increase in price that was anticipated that's built into a contract? In other words, a, an additional stage? Or is this a, an amendment that changes what was originally forecast as the cost for this?
Yeah, so this was originally anticipated. As the project progressed, each phase, basically, J.F. Riley's very helpful in his works with Palmeroy. They provide, they provide, you know, their estimates of cost, and then J.R. basically reviews them and looks at whether they are acceptable or not, and then we move forward to the next step with Kathy Riley to ensure, you know, that they, the construction processes be followed. So these, all these costs are anticipated that as the projects have developed and matured, that we basically move to the next step and the next amendment. So it's kind of the first phase was 23, which was just, I mean, $24,000, which was originally just to hire the designer and then get the designing of the projects that are going on at the Country Club. And then we had Phase 2, the site work, and then some design development, construction development plans. And now this is the third phase where we're actually completing the construction project of the maintenance building.
And so for the cumulative cost of all three phases, is that the 271,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
271,347.50.
Okay. And when is this work expected to be concluded?
We anticipate that we will be moving into the building probably in March. The contract, as I mentioned, runs through August 31st, 2023, but, you know, it's sort of they completed, and if we have additional work for them, we also have, like I said, the master plan that we're working on, and they are coordinating that and a bit along with the designer as well. But we anticipate that the construction of the project will be done in March, and then when the asphalt companies open up in the spring, they'll be able to complete the finished product for the, for asphalt and the paving of the road, and then it will be completed with the maintenance building probably in early April.
Got it. Thank you. No other questions.
Thanks, Joe. Liz?
Thank you, Kevin. Can you just talk about Phase 3 a little bit? I think it already started in, back in July, is that right?
I'm sorry, Liz, what was that?
With Phase 3, can you just explain what's happening during Phase 3?
Yeah, so Phase 3, as we are, as, I don't know if you remember, but we, what we did was we split the bits, and we did the maintenance portion of the contract first. So that was last, Phase 3 would be the actual physical construction of the, of the maintenance building, and so they will be providing supervisory services for Phase 3 within, you know, the construction in the direction of the building, the maintenance building, and the completion of the maintenance building. So that's, this portion of the amendment is to provide those services through the completion of the maintenance building contract.
Okay.
And then make it so that the contract is, you know, done to the bid services that the contractor provided.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the public?
No, I actually.
Any additional question? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the letter from Taylor McDonald, the August 22nd letter. I just want to make sure I understand it. There's, there are seven items listed, and the seventh has a, under the cost column, it says TBD. Does that mean that there will be an additional amendment to fund additional work for, for item number seven there?
So, if, if work progresses on other projects that are, you know, that are planned at the Country Club, then we would have to come back and amend this, you know, have a Fourth Amendment for number seven, for them to provide those services.
Okay, so that's not included in what, in this scope of work?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, got it.
So if there's additional work, you know, for another project that we, you know, have, then they would basically have to come back and make a Fourth Amendment and provide additional funding for the services. Now, that's all anticipated in the projects that we do have, you know, that we do anticipate having at the Country Club.
Got it. Thank you. No other questions.
Thank you. Any questions, any questions from the public? All right, seen. Seen, now I take a motion?
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Third Amendment to the agreement with Palmeroy Associates LLC to complete Phase 3 of the Owners Project Manager Services for the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility in an amount not to exceed $125,204.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Kevin, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Woodco Machinery Incorporated for a new Volvo L90H front-end loader for the Public Works Department. I believe we have Randy with us tonight. Randy, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I am doing well, thank you.
Great. Can you tell us a little, little bit about this agreement and a little bit about the L90H?
So, this, this new machine comes from Woodco Machinery. It is an L90. It's replacing a 2013 Volvo Melt 60. It's a little bit bigger machine. It was available, so we could purchase it, which is, we were lucky, and that equipment's hard to get today. So we went and purchased it. It's for basically loading trucks, especially during the winter with salt and whatnot. It's our main machine, and we weren't really DPW.
Randy, how, how long will a machine like this last us?
This should last us at least a good 10 to 15 years. It all depends on how much we have to use it in the salt. The salt does take a, quite a, quite a toll on the machine, and it depends on the winters.
And how many of these do we have in our, you know, for DPW? Do we have two of these, and do they load all of our trucks? Do we rely on one of these?
So, so we have one.
Yeah.
One main loader for the DPW down at the DPW 25 Farico Park, and there's another loader at the transfer station for moving containers and recyclables and trash, and that's, that's another machine we have at the transfer station. We also have a backhoe at each transfer station in the, in the DPW, and that's about it for machinery.
Great. Randy, thanks very much. Liz?
Thank you, Randy. Just one question, has this amount already been budgeted for?
This much? This amount, the amount budgeted was 220,364. We did, the purchase price of this is 2,000, 200,023,689. So there's a $3,300 difference, which I'll take out of my operating budget. Due to that, it's a larger machine, it was a little bit more expensive, and we are getting other contagion support also.
Got it, okay. And I know you said it's available now, so we'll have it by the end of the month, it looks like?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, great. No other questions?
Joe? So Randy, at our next meeting, you're going to drive us, drive it to the meeting, we'll take a look. So, all right, so the contract has a term that expires September 30th, which means that under this agreement, we need to receive it by the, by the end of the month. Is that, is that correct?
We'll have the machine by then.
Yep. And just following up on Liz's question, just so I'm clear, do we have a, a capital acquisition schedule, and is this, this purchase of this item?
We do, we have a 30-year schedule. Most of my equipment is deferred. That, this is the only piece of equipment I got this year.
So is it, but this is a?
I had, I had about five pieces of equipment out there and vehicles to replace.
Yep. But this is an item that is on your list?
This is an item on my list.
Yes. And will it replace any item that will be disposed of?
It will replace an L60. The previous front end loader, 2010, no, 2013 Volvo L60. So yes.
And will that be?
We did, we did get a trade-in for that of $22,000.
Oh, so, so the trade-in of the old piece is factored into the pricing?
Yes.
Okay. You've answered all my questions, then, thank you.
Any questions or concerns from members of the public? All right, seen. Now I take a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Woodco Machinery Incorporated for a new Volvo L90H front-end loader for the Public Works Department in an amount not to exceed $223,689.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Randy, thanks very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and potential vote regarding the amended bylaws of Hingham Community Access and Media Incorporated. Tom, you going to take this one?
Sure. So, and John Coffin is on the line, too, should we need anything from him, but John and I worked together reviewing these. These were presented to us by the, by the Hingham Community Access and Media Corporation, otherwise known as Harbor Media. These are their bylaws to operate by. Under the old bylaws, you have, you as the Select Board need to authorize them. Under the new bylaws, you will not need to. All of the protections the town needs is in that contract that we signed, what, two months ago, thereabouts? So the town, John and I have spoken and worked with Laura Burns on this, and we have also talked to the Harbor, or excuse me, the Cable Advisory Committee, and also they are on board with this, with these bylaws. So, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
I, I don't have any questions or comments. I am the liaison, so we've been working closely with Laura Burns. I know this was, this was a priority for them to get done, so glad to see it's moving forward. But I think, you know, as, as Tom said, anything that would be concerning to us as a town is, is covered in the contract, and that these make sense in terms of their bylaws.
Great. Yeah, I know, I know it was a priority for, for Laura and some of the other folks on the board. So glad to see us moving forward with it, and I have no, certainly have no concern to questions. Joe?
So, Tom, you referred to the contract that protects the town. What is the term of that contract?
I believe, John Coffin, you remember, is it five years?
Yeah, I think it was a five-year contract, Tom, with, with three-year options.
Yep.
So if the contract is not extended beyond five years, does the town have any protections?
Well, the contract is what funds H-CAM, so if we no longer have a contract with Harbor Media, that means they no longer have any funding. Right now, Hingham supplies almost all the funding for H-CAM through the cable contracts. That money flows through the town, I think goes to H-CAM. If we do not remove that contract, then we have no relationship with H-CAM at that point, and they have to find another funding source to continue on.
Right, so if they obtain another funding source, then the town of Hingham would not have the protections that you're speaking of?
We would enter a new con?
We would set up a new, we would set up a new contract that would do the services for the town, H-CAM, and no more would be our contract.
Got it. And who gets to vote? I'm just trying to understand, who votes for the Board of Directors of H-CAM?
So the Select Board appoints two of the members, so one of the bylaws majority have to be residents of Hingham, and the Select Board appoints two of the members.
So there are, Board has to have, is it nine members or five?
Three, five members.
Three, five, and nine. So we appoint a minority of the, of the Board members. Who elects the others?
They do.
The members of the, of the nonprofit corporation.
And who, who are the members?
I don't know, Jill, I don't know.
No, no, I didn't know. What, what are the qualifications to be a member?
Once you're elected a member, then you're a voting member for new, for electing new members.
Okay.
I don't know what, when they started 20 years ago or so, but once that group was made, that, that group of people elects the new members.
And are the eight? Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We have to remember, this is a separate legal nonprofit corporation from the town, so this is their, you know, this is their bylaws, this is their charter, how they operate.
So I?
We, we have that separate grant agreement that specifies how they deal with Hingham directly in, in obtaining funds from us, which we're going to negotiate and keep in that contract.
Sure.
But this is their, this is kind of their operating charter, the bylaws.
So, but, but you, you've just led me to the next question. I think I know the answer. They have their own tax-exempt number, their own tax-exempt status, independent of the town?
Correct.
Okay. Got no other questions? Thank you.
Any questions from any member of the public? Seen, now I take a motion?
I move to approve the amended bylaws of Hingham Community Access and Media, Inc. in the form attached heretofu.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.[1763.83]
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to sign the local action unit application for 29 through 31 Road Circle. Believe we have Jack Falvey with us. Jack, how are you?
I'm well.
Welcome. Can you up to the podium? Jack, if you could just state your name and address for the record? Good to see you again.
So Jack Falvey, 18 Martins Co., Road, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Can you tell us a little about the, the application and-
Yeah, sure. So having taken the podium, I'm actually going to largely defer to Jen Orem and Eleanor McKay, who are with us remotely. This application is to bring forward this duplex that the Housing Trust purchased back in 2019 and has developed extensively over the last three years. Largely, my predecessors on the trust. And we are now, after extensive renovations, in a position to bring it to market and have completed the necessary application for the local action unit approval by the DHCD. And it's that application that we're requesting approval of and signature of this evening. And it's, I know the, the Board has the application and the, and the cover memo from Jennifer and Eleanor that kind of lay out the grounds for why this is ready. And it's really a great step as far as the Affordable Housing Trust is concerned, to be able to get close to bringing this, this pair of homes to market and, and selling them and getting some families in there who can benefit from the housing.
Jack, thank you. Jennifer, you want to add anything to Jack's, Jack's presentation?
No, except for that, just as I mentioned, prior to our coming on, this has been a project that's been in the works for a long before Eleanor and I were here. And so this is very exciting to get it to the next step. DHCD is running about two to three months. So having this next step to get close to submitting it is, is really helpful. So we appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. I don't see, I don't know if Eleanor is with us this evening or not, if she is. Eleanor, do you want to add anything as well?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
My camera's not working tonight, I'm not sure why. However, it is a wonderful project. It's been a great experience working on this duplex and trying to bring this project to fruition. We put this, close to $200,000 into the project, like it was mentioned. And the property is now worth considerably more. It's close to, close to $800,000 is the value of the property. But we'll be selling it for $220,000 for each unit. So it's very, it's just a wonderful, wonderful cause. And we're very proud of the work we've put into it.
Eleanor, thank you. Let me see if anybody has any questions. Liz?
I don't have any questions. I, I'm the liaison for the Affordable Housing Trust. So I've, I've gotten to kind of listen and see how this has progressed. And just want to extend my sincere thanks to the Housing Trust and Jennifer and Eleanor. They certainly should be proud of, of these properties. As you can see, the scope of work included, you know, connection to public sewer, new boilers, new hot water heaters. There was a lot of discussion about efficiency of the utilities, as well as some of the more aesthetic things. So I think this, these are some properties that we can be really proud of and certainly welcome to new families to town.
Joe?
Yes, so I would echo Liz's commendation and support for the Affordable Housing Trust. Their work is not always easy, not always publicly recognized. It should be appreciated more. So we really appreciate your efforts here. I just want to make sure that I understand the process that's going on. First, I understand that the sale price was determined by the lottery agent. If you could just explain who the lottery agent is and what process they went through to determine that price?
Joe, if I could, the sale price is really determined by the DHCD's calculator. So they determine based on the family of three. And that we're selling the property to families at a 60% AMI. They have this calculator that figures out what the sale price should be so that it's affordable to this family. So it wasn't really determined by the lottery agent, it's determined by DHCD. And with the lottery agent, we just get the word out there.
Okay, so you've, I guess corrected my understanding or not understanding, because I'm actually reading the memo, which says lottery agent calculated the sale price to be 220. So I understand it's, the memo perhaps needs to reflect that it was DHCD and not the lottery agent. So when someone purchases the property, are there income restrictions that run with the land so that it is not sold at a profit or disposed of and no longer within the Affordable Housing Trust's domain?
If I may, yes, so there would be a deed restriction and for any transfer, if the people choose to sell, it has to be, it comes back to the town and it's deed restricted, it should be sold to an income-eligible family.
And do you know if the town is protected in the event of foreclosure?
Of foreclosure? I believe that there are provisions within the master deed restriction regarding if there's any financial issues with the property, that they would come back. I think Susan Murphy's here, who could comment on the foreclosure question?
Great.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Susan.
Susan Murphy, Special Real Estate Counsel. With the, the ATD has modified their form of universal debriefer that's attached for these types of units to specifically address foreclosures. In the past, the town has been in connection with foreclosures that the town has had to go to somewhat extraordinary people means to intervene to make sure that things did not sell out from under the restriction. But the ATD has corrected that in their current form.
That is good to hear.
And Joe, if, if I could, just to speak to the calculation?
Yep.
I, I think that, you know, all things are true. The, the lottery agent didn't calculate the price, but they did it using the ATD's formula.
Sure.
So the ATD didn't actually do the calculation. They provide the formula, but the lottery agent, working with Jen and Eleanor, applied the calculation to determine the price. So I think, you know, we could have made that a little more specific in the memo, but just for clarification, that's how that happened.
Got it. I really appreciate your, your update on the foreclosure, because I know that has been an issue in the past for the town. I think you've covered all my questions, thank you.
Does anyone, any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seen, none that take a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Chair to execute and submit a local action unit application for 29 and 31 Road Circle to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, along with a request to offer one of the units through a local preference lottery and thereafter to execute all necessary documents, including but not limited to a regulatory agreement in order to qualify the units for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory as deed-restricted, affordable ownership condominium units.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there a need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. Jack, don't go far.
I won't.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss and vote on reducing the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust from nine members to seven members. And Jack, you want to tell us a little bit about this, this proposal?
Sure, we submitted a memorandum on, on this as well, as you know. So the bylaw permits the Housing Trust to have anywhere from five to nine members. Traditionally, at least for the last number of years, it's had nine members. We had several people have to leave the trust after long service recently. We had a couple of meetings where we were unable to gather a quorum. And we thought about it and realized we really should be at seven. It's, it's a great number in terms of the trust's effectiveness and ability to distribute projects among members of the trust. It gives us plenty of people and should help us avoid another quorum issue like that. So we, as I think some of you know, we were down to five. We added a member recently and we have a seventh application before the Board this evening of somebody who we think is tremendously well-qualified and a nice compliment in terms of her experience. So that will bring us to the full seven. And we request that this motion be allowed, because that's kind of the right size for us.
Well, prior to Liz serving as a liaison, I was liaison to the trust. And I, I do support this, this motion. And just want to, I think this is the right size for the trust. It, I think lowering the number gets you to where you're going to have the right quorum, won't have any problems with the meetings. And just want to emphasize the great work that the trust does. I was very proud to be the liaison because of the work the trust does. And I want to thank you, Jack, for stepping up and helping to serve as the Chair, particularly recently. So thanks for all you're doing and not only all the trust members, but for your leadership. So really appreciate you doing that.
So thank you. And as you know, I have very big shoes to fill.
You do, you do. That is true.
Both my immediate predecessor and, and then her predecessor, both of whom did just wonderful work during their periods. And so we're going to do our best to keep the momentum moving forward. But I do think this number enables all of us to be really engaged. Each of us have ownership of projects. And we really have a pretty exciting agenda ahead of us over the next couple of years.
Thank you. I'll turn to Liz first as liaison.
Yes, I have no concerns. Certainly have, have worked with the trust on this. And, and I agree, I think it's a good number in terms of enough people to kind of divvy up the work and, and delegate. There are many ongoing projects. But I think it's a, it's a manageable number and a good number to meet on a monthly basis. So I, I support this.
Joe?
Yes, so Bill, prior to your involvement, I was liaison to- And I will say, this was probably one of the most fun boards to sit on. The, the spirit, the, the, I was going to say intensity, but it's, it was really just a great group. So I'm sure you're carrying on not only the work, but the fun, because you make a major contribution to the town. So reducing this, the board from nine to seven reduces the quorum from five to four. So I assume that you've, you're comfortable with that as a quorum requirement?
We are, as a legal matter, and it complies with the bylaw, I think. And this doesn't take any pressure off of the Select Board member to be there in every darn meeting.
I try, I try.
And I will note that, assuming that we do make this change this evening, it is not a permanent change. So that if there's a groundswell of support, a lot of people want to serve, we, we have the ability to, to change it as long as we stay within the requirement of between five and nine.
That's a great point.
So I absolutely think this makes sense. You do, you do not want to be hampered by the absence of a quorum. And I think this is the right number for a functional, good group.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Any questions from the public? Seen, none that take a motion?
I move to reduce the Board of Trustees of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust from nine trustees to seven trustees under the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), and the Town of Hingham General Bylaw, Article 39.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. Jack, thanks very much, great to see you as always.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion of financing considerations and estimated tax impacts of foster school and public safety facility debt exclusion projects.
Bill, before we proceed, would it be appropriate to move the appointments item up since we are also going to be dealing with the Housing Trust? And I'm not sure how long we're going to have our member here that-
Sure, we could do that, yeah, yeah.
Great.
You okay with that, Liz?
Sure.
All right. We can, we can move item 12 up now, if you'd like. So we can move to item 12, which are appointments. Are there any appointments this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Pam Beetz to the Affordable Housing Trust to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. All right, so I've already called the next item on the agenda. I think Tom and Michelle are going to take us to this one. So you're going to lead us off and then hand it off to Michelle.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you very much. I will, I'll start off with a couple of slides and we'll turn it over to Michelle, who will walk us through some of the modeling efforts. And then we'll culminate back with a recommendation for some structure towards the end. So tonight's effort, this is really a discussion about a financing plan, a projected financing plan for the tax impacts of both the foster and public safety facility debt exclusion projects as they're currently proposed. And will be presented to town meeting on November 1st, at special town meeting. So with that, I, I'll walk through a brief look back just so we can all be grounded in, in reality as to how we got to where we are. I will start out with a simple statement that I think, I think, a lot of people I've talked to have acknowledged, I believe this to be a fact, that the town has been under-investing perhaps in, in building and infrastructure for many decades. And as a result, we find ourselves in a situation where we're trying to, to catch up. And we have a lot of very aged infrastructure. And we just need to start a process of investing in a, in a responsible way with those, with those projects, with those buildings and, and infrastructure projects. So that said, we moved in, we move into the foster school discussion. You know, I was here when the Board began those discussions, met with the MSBA back in 2016, started working through that effort through 2017. We submitted an application. We were unsuccessful in getting to the, through the MSBA process for three straight years until they accepted us now a year and a half or so ago into their process. And then that process takes time. So that's the state's process for, for co-funding these large school projects. And as a result, I'll point out that we're getting $25 million in grant money from, from the state to help offset the tax impacts for these projects. I'd also note that the public safety facility, once we identified where we needed to be for, in terms of moving the North Fire Station, acknowledging that, that the acknowledgement had, has occurred for nearly a decade that the North Fire Station was outdated and needed to be replaced. Once we, we did a more modern assessment of the needs of that, of that fire station in terms of response times, we realized we had to be up in the three, Route 3A corridor up and around the shipyard. And it took a, a little while to identify and find a viable location. We've done that a couple of years back. And that's now been, been funded and paid for and is available for this project. But that took a little while. And then I'll note that throughout this whole process, Select Boards, past and present, have been saving that unassigned fund balance, the excess fund balance, as we think of it, for, to help mitigate for this purpose, for these projects. These are the projects that we knew were coming. And these are the projects that we've been saving that unassigned fund balance to, to help apply to the debt schedule to offset and to mitigate the tax impact. So those are the debt exclusions. I'll just speak very briefly about the operating override that is being discussed for the spring of '23. You know, from an operational standpoint, I think the town also has been, quite frankly, underfunding some operations over many years, especially, I think, capital. That's really the place that, that bears the brunt of, of a lot of the operational cuts and, and decisions that we have to make at the end of the budgeting season when we have to cut back on, on places. Often, it falls to capital to bear that burden. And that's a problem. You know, we heard Randy Sylvester earlier tonight talk about his deferment list. If, there are many things, frankly, that keep me up at night in this job. But that one is right up at the top of the list. And he has projects on there, dozens of projects, that are deferred for 10 or more years. Many of them are vehicles that are being kept, held together with the, purely with the skill of his mechanic. And perhaps a couple of rolls of duct tape. And the town looks beautiful and it always has, and I'm sure will continue to under his management and the skill of his team. But frankly, that's not a plan. We need, we need to fund capital appropriately. We need, we need to fund capital appropriately so that we can, we can manage the capital program a little bit more successfully. And then there are other, there are other items that drive the need for an operational override. There's expenditure growth, certainly has been outpacing revenue, revenue growth for years. If you'll remember, last year, we went into the budget season knowing that we were going to be using fund, federal dollars to fund, in essence, thirty-six new positions. Was this last year or two years ago?
Two years.
Two, two years ago, yeah. Thirty-six new positions. And those positions to, were to recover from the pandemic, they were, spoken of as adding critical capacity in some places, and, you know, these are the things that we all did as a town. The select board at the time, the advisory committee at the time, the school committee at the time, all went together with my full support of my office to town meeting and presented that, that budget to town meeting, who passed it unanimously. Everyone understood that we wanted to maximize the use of federal dollars, and that's what we were doing. And at the same time, we were filling known, known and anticipated gaps in our, in our operational needs. So some of them were, were certainly pandemic-related as well. So again, we've, we've created the situation where we'll need an operating override, and I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. I will make a, one general note on, on all of this look back before we get into the next slide, just that the finance plan we're going to see tonight is really the culmination of many years of effort by many people. The efforts include approvals at each of the last four town meetings, and if you wanted to go back, we could go back close to a decade for some of the approvals that were given for replacement of the original fire station. So these buildings are due, they've been talked about and approved at different stages by town meeting for a number of years. We have had dozens of public meetings by the foster and public safety facility building committees, made up of resident, resident volunteers in town. We've saved, I just spoke about saving excess fund balance for a number of years to help offset the tax impact of these, of these projects. Beginning several years ago, we began the, the creation of tax impact and more recently debt exclusion models with the help of, again, dedicated residents, folks like John Asher, who have been incredibly important as we, as they help us build these models. And Michelle and I and others are able to sit around a table and, and project and model the impacts of the projects as we see them, and try to build the financing plan you're about to see in a way that is least impactful. And then, of course, we created the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force that went through a massive effort a year and a half ago to create a document that we've been using on a near daily basis to try to drive and, and steer our efforts as we, as we approach these, both the spring town or the fall town meeting for these debt exclusions, as well as an operational override here and coming up in the spring. In short, I would just simply state that these projects, that bring these projects forward is, in essence, the culmination of commitments made by the town for a number of years. That's the way I see it. So moving forward, I'll, I'll read this slide. I never read slides. I'm going to read this slide because I want everyone that's listening and watches this tonight and in the future to understand the terminology that we're going to use. So as we speak about debt exclusions, what we're talking about are temporary tax increases to fund specific capital projects. These require approvals at both town meeting as well as the ballot, and in particular, the conversation tonight, the two debt exclusions we're talking about are the construction of a new foster school and the construction of a new public safety facility. The term debt limit is, think of as the town's legal borrowing ceiling. That's what we mean when we speak of the town's debt limit. Debt capacity, we're back and forth on a definition on this for our purposes, and I think the, the closest we could get to a, to an accurate one and a descriptive one is, really, it's about the taxpayer's willingness to take on debt for capital projects. That's what we speak of when we talk about debt capacity. There are, as we, as we fund these, these projects, there's a lot of early-on costs that taper off, as you'll see in the modeling that Michelle's going to walk through in a minute, and that tapering off over the years is what's, is what's allowing for debt capacity in future years to add more projects. And again, I was speaking at the very beginning of this presentation about our need for a more regular, more cyclical approach to, to capital infrastructure investment. Level debt service, I'll just read these last three pretty quick. The debt service schedule in which the combined annual amount of principal and interest payments remains relatively constant over the life of the issue of the bonds. This will result in a lower payment, but more total interest costs. A level principal debt, debt scenario will, is a debt service schedule in which the amount of principal paid back annually remains constant, while the amount of interest paid back declines over time. And this usually will result in less overall interest cost, but steeper payments upfront. And lastly, I'll just speak to, to a concept that we've incorporated into this review of net present value, and really, this is speaking to, to the time value of money. And that's how we, that's how we think of this as we, as we use that term going through this presentation. So regarding the next, you know, the, the process here, this, this analysis, so setting the table for this discussion, the, what we're, what we're talking about are the November first town meeting and November eighth ballot, where we're going to be asking the town to consider funding foster school and public safety to these amounts. So we will be getting authorization for foster school in the amount of one hundred and thirteen million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. When you subtract, that's the authorization we have to get, because the MSBA requires the town to have authorization for the full anticipated amount of construction. But the reality and what we're expecting is, when you reduce that amount by the anticipated MSBA grant, we would actually be borrowing in the neighborhood of eighty-eight million, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. And for the public safety facility, we will be authorizing borrowing in the amount of forty-six million, seven hundred thousand. On November eighth, there'll be a debt exclusion ballot questions, and that, those ballot questions will include the eighty-eight million, two seventeen, one ninety, and the forty-six million, seven hundred thousand that I just spoke of. But we're adding to that the authorizations received at last spring's town meeting for pre-construction costs. That's in the amount of three million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars for foster, and one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for public safety. So those will be added into the borrowing for, you see the totals there, totaling a hundred and thirty-nine million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. That'll be what the ballot questions, in essence, are authorizing. All right? The override request is, you'll see some of this again when you, when Michelle gets into her, into her presentation. You'll see that we do speak of the override request, and what we decided to focus on for these purposes today is what we know today, and that is the floor of the financial forecast. We're going to actually give that forecast presentation immediately following this presentation, but that, right now, we're forecasting the, the existing deficit going into the FY twenty-four season is four point, a little under four point nine million dollars, four point eight-eight and change. And so, given that, we're forecasting in this document and Michelle's modeling, a four point nine million dollar override request in the spring. Okay? Michelle, take it away.
Before, if you can go back, Tom, so are you going to, and, Michelle, are you going to go into why we added to the eighty-eight million, why we added the three point one million, why, why you recommend?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, I can do that. So the, the decision point for adding that three point one-two-eight and the one point five-eight-five is because the, we could borrow those in a separate issuance, but we would have to pay them back in a five-year window. And the five-year payback on nearly six million dollars of debt would be a very high burden on, as debt service would be a high burden on our operating budget. So by incorporating it, I, I believe logically so, into these projects that they're related to, directly related to, I think makes more sense than to be able to spread that, that debt, those debt payments out over the, the projected length of the borrowing.
Right, so we can amortize those costs over many more years than in short term.
That's right. That's right, yeah. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
I missed that, yeah.
Do you want to introduce Janet?
Yeah. So the next two slides are going to be given by Janet Morley of Capital Markets Advisors. Capital Markets Advisors, for those of you who have been paying attention for a number of years, is probably a familiar group. CMA has been the town's financial advisors for a couple of decades now. Janet has been front and center with everything we do for a long time. I'm going to turn it over to Janet to walk us through some of the interest rate assumptions that we're making in these models. Janet?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Tom. So the next couple of slides, just wanted to give folks a sense of where interest rates have been, some indication more recently since the beginning of this year as well. So the, the current slide that you're looking at is a history of triple-A MMD, MMD rates. Yeah? I'm sorry, did someone have a question?
No questions, nope.
I thought I heard, I thought I heard something. So again, these are rates since two thousand, triple-A MMD rates. MMD stands for municipal market data. It's an industry standard that we use to look at interest rates. They are published every single day and represent an amalgamation of all general obligation bonds sold on any given day throughout the country. And as I said, this is used as a kind of industry benchmark to review rates and for projections. You see here three lines. It's the one-year serial maturity, the fifteen-year serial maturity, and the thirty-year serial maturity, plotted out for the past twenty-two years. And what we thought might be interesting for folks is to get a sense of how interest rates have reacted historically in a couple of key timeframes. The two thousand and one dot com bubble, the two thousand and seven to nine, the two thousand and eight fiscal crisis, and then, of course, more recently, the COVID nineteen shutdown in March of two thousand and twenty. Rates over this period of time have really been at very attractive rates from a historical perspective, and we're looking back to January of two thousand, where they started out with thirty-year rates somewhere around six percent. There are periods of time, certainly I remember in the eighties, when rates were as high as eight percent. And then I know you can find folks who, from the seventies, who would talk about double-digit municipal interest rates. But for the past twenty-two years, we've had a fairly attractive rate environment for interest rates. The next slide that I thought might be of interest is just this year alone, and there are some additional lines here. We're looking at multiple serial maturities, the one-year, five-year, ten-year, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty. The interest, there's a few interesting things about this slide. Once January hit this year, inflation concerns really started amping up, and you can see that rates started escalating. In March of this year, the Federal Reserve implemented its first rate hike for the overnight rate by twenty-five basis points, a fairly benign rate hike. Rates continued to climb, inflation continued to be a concern, and in May, they implemented another fifty basis point rate hike. You can see in late May, rates started coming down a little bit in reaction to those, to those actions by the Fed. But again, inflation rates still not coming down to where they wanted to see. So in June, there was an aggressive rate hike by the Fed of seventy-five basis points, well-received by the market. Expectations were that inflation would start coming down, and it has. But in July of this year, yet again, another seventy-five basis point rate hike. Again, some good news with, with inflation. This chart ends in July thirty. In August, what we have seen is that rates have gone up. The thirty-year MMD rate for the latter portion of August was around three point five percent. We had some additional inflation data come out this week that, that showed inflation was coming down, certainly not to where the market had expected, and rates have gone up a little bit more even this week. So we're now, the most recent data I have for thirty-year MMD is somewhere in the neighborhood of three fifty-eight, was up another two to eight basis points along this yield curve. Again, in the grand scheme of things, attractive rates, but certainly on a generally upward incline. So when we look at projections for these projects, we're looking at doing some bond anticipation notes in the early stages, and eventual conversion to long-term bond finance. There are several scenarios that you will see here. When we look at the rates, for projection purposes, we'll look at not only the current MMD scales, but also how Hingham bonds have traded relative to those MMD scales in prior offerings. And then we add a, a fairly conservative cushion to give us some room for additional market movement. I will tell you that the Fed is meeting again September twentieth and twenty-first, and it's widely expected that there will be another seventy-five basis point rate hike. Municipal rates don't move in exact tandem with Treasury rates, but there is certainly some relationship over time. So I'll, I'll pause there for, for just a minute.
Questions, are any? Great.
Thank you very much, Janet.
Thank you, Janet. Michelle, you want to take it from here?
So that leads into, when we were here last time, a few weeks ago, we talked about the various debt structuring considerations that go into helping to make these projections, and everything that Janet just talked about, obviously, our interest rate assumptions are a big piece of how the projections impact people's tax bills. And for some of the considerations, we talked about twelve different ones last time, but for many of them, we follow the guidance of our financial advisors like Janet. So CMA has helped develop those interest rate assumptions, for example, starting around three point five percent, moving up to five and capping off there to be relatively conservative in our projections. But in, but in our conversations here tonight, we focus a bit more on these four on the screen. One is the decision in terms of when to move from the short-term bands, the one-year notes, to the longer-term bonds. Like Janet just mentioned, all the projections that you will see tonight kind of stick with our practice of doing band-band bond. So being in the short-term market for two years, locking in the long-term debt in the third year, but depending on what actually happens in the market, we could do something different. This is, Tom and I like to remind people that, you know, what we're looking at tonight are our estimates, our anticipated plan, our best guess projections, but we will come back with the finance team and ultimately this board to make those borrowing decisions each time we go to the market, and we're likely going to go to the market at least for the next three years for these projects based on the construction schedule. But two of the other ones that we've talked a lot about tonight are the term, so the twenty-to-thirty-year period, which is kind of the practical range for projects of this size. We could, we could, of course, borrow for less than that, but that's just not really practical in terms of trying to pay this debt back. And the repayment structure. Tom talked about the level principal versus the level payment. The level payment is more like people's mortgages, where you have a set annual amount for the life of the bond, and the level principal pays back the principal more aggressively, and overall, those payments shrink over time, but start out a bit more front-loaded. And then we've also talked a bit about existing and future debt capacity, shown at the bottom of this slide, I think we showed it last time. This is the existing excluded debt that Hingham is currently paying for, so there's about four projects that we're still paying for, things like the middle school, that are coming out of people's tax bills on top of the normal two and a that are coming out of people's tax bills on top of the normal 2.5% right now. So that's what the blue represents.
Michelle, can you just move the mic a little closer? Your mic, right here, move it closer to you.
This one?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So this blue you will see reflected in the next scenario. So capital markets advisors Janet, Alex, and their team very helpfully developed a bunch of different scenarios for us to walk through. And that's where these charts come through in these, in these potential debt structures. We wanted to start with kind of the two ranges of the spectrum. And I'm going to do a lot of toggling back and forth tonight so people can see the difference. But we start with sort of the shorter-term one, right? 20 years and level principal. This is the shortest term in this range, and level principal is paying the principal back more aggressively. So the payments you can see from the chart are more front-loaded. The blue at the bottom represents the blue you just saw on the last screen, the existing excluded debt. The red or orange here that you can see, the red, I guess, is the pool project that was approved recently, but we haven't yet borrowed for that. So what you see in these projections, in all of them, is two years of band and then 18 years of bond at a level principal. So that's a 20-year borrowing for the pool. What we're playing with tonight more is the yellow, which is public safety, and the green, which is foster school. And then on the left side, you can see the total amount of debt service that's resulting from these projects. And on the bottom is the 30-year window that we're talking about. So if I toggle back and forth between this one and the other end of the spectrum, you can see this one is the 30-year term and level debt service for both projects. So compared to this one, we're flattening this out as much as possible. So you're, overall, you're paying more for the project in interest costs over time. But on an annual basis, it's the most affordable for people because it's the smallest impact on the tax bill on an annual basis. But then in our conversations with select, remember Joe Fisher? We talked a lot about the net present value and the idea of looking at, trying to capture the time value of money here in terms of talking about future capacity to take on additional projects and people's ability to pay down the line. So capital markets very helpfully added this black line. It represents the net present value of the debt service for the three projects that we haven't yet borrowed for, for the pool, the public safety facility, and foster school. And so what we're trying to show here in this scenario is while that, if you just look at the bars for the debt service, over time, it looks like there's not a lot of capacity created in the out years. But when you think about it in terms of the time value of money, people's ability to pay $20 today for debt service is different from their ability to pay that same $20 in nominal dollars 15 years from now. So the black line's trying to capture the capacity that's added over time when you think about discounted dollars. And this is using a discount rate of 2.2%. I think Janet can comment more on that, but that's a relatively conservative option as well. We were focusing in our conversations on the 30-year term here, and I'm going to now toggle between these two. Because of the size of the projects, we're talking about $139 million total. We are leaning towards the 30-year option just to be able to smooth it out over time for people for a number of reasons. A, the useful life of both of these projects is well over 30 years. And you typically want to match the term of the borrowing more closely with the useful life of a project. Part of that is making sure that the folks getting the benefits of the projects are also the ones bearing part of the costs of it. Rick can comment on this. Rick Manley is here tonight. He's our bond counsel. But in talking with Rick and Janet about how other communities are financing projects of this size, both for schools and for other large building projects like public safety facilities, it sounds like many communities are opting for the 30-year term. And in speaking with Rick, we understand that Massachusetts changed the rules, changed the laws for municipalities around 2010 to make that an option. Rick, could you comment a little bit on that?
Sure. The, you know, it was historically the case that the term of borrowings for projects like buildings and substantial reconstruction of buildings was 20 years. And then 2010, I think for the Municipal Relief Act, they moved out the maximum term for most projects of this type to 30 years. I think really it was a realization that these projects were substantially more expensive than they had been and that it just gave an option or a tool for communities to consider when they're doing a long-term project like this with an expected life well in excess of 30 years in any event. So that it wasn't necessarily a mismatch between the term of the financing and the life of the asset, but rather recognizing that, you know, it's just a longer-lived asset. So it wouldn't be inappropriate to pay for it over the, you know, at least a longer proportion of its expected useful life. So we see most of our communities that we work with, and we probably work with 80 or 90% of the communities in Massachusetts, tend to look at 30-year option or maybe at the shortest, the 25-year option when they're thinking about these larger projects that, you know, carry significant price tags.
Thank you. And another factor, of course, as Tom mentioned tonight, is in us leaning towards the 30-year option here is being cognizant that we're also proposing an override this spring. So we're trying to be mindful of the cumulative tax impact if everything passes on folks. And that's what is leading us to want to spread this out over time and make it easier for people on an annual basis to, to support these projects if they so choose. So what you're looking at here is 30 years level debt service for both of these two projects. We also came up with a hybrid approach that took the smaller of the two projects, the public safety facility, I'll toggle back and forth in the yellow, and took public safety and said, what if we did level principal for that project? Just to try to create a little bit more capacity in the out years, save a little bit on total interest costs. And you can see here in the beginning, in years 26, 27, and 28, that there's a bit of a spike in terms of when this, the long-term debt service gets added. But keep in mind that we're proposing to use that unassigned fund balance to kind of blunt that initial impact. So if you imagine that, that initial spike gone between these two scenarios, where folks kind of end up is around the same starting point once we use the fund balance. So we're, we're leading towards recommending that for projection purposes, this structure, this hybrid structure B, might make the most sense in terms of our anticipated plan. Again, keeping in mind that we'll continuously reevaluate all of these assumptions at the time of borrowing. But if we use this structure, structure B for projections purposes, and then we, and then we apply the unassigned fund balance, what we're talking about is about $7 million that we've saved over the years to blunt this impact. And again, I'll toggle, if you keep your eye on the, the peak in the beginning here. We're talking about applying $7 million in this scenario to years 25, 6, 7, and 8. And we're talking about $1 million in FY '25, $3 million in FY '26, $2 million in FY '27, and $1 million in FY '28. And it looks a little bit funny here. But we'll show you now, when we run it through John Asher's financial model, what it actually looks like in terms of the tax impact for the median taxpayer. And then it will make a little bit more sense. Okay, so this is the output from John's model, which is incredibly helpful and incredibly powerful in informing our deliberations and our conversations. So across here, you see 10 years of projected tax impact. And this all focuses on the median taxpayer in Hingham, whose assessed value is about $700,000. The, the tax bill goes up to the left side right there, and the fiscal years go across the bottom. This starts in FY '24. So the blue bars here represent what the projection, what the projected tax bill would be anyways. If we do the normal, just 2.5% tax increase each year and the CPA surcharge, but we don't approve any projects and we don't do any override. So the blue bar is likely what this person's tax bill is going to go up by in the, in the normal course of business. And we like using the median. This is something we did in the Sustainable Budget Task Force report because you know that 50% of the town will have a tax impact that's lower than this and 50% of the town will have a tax impact that's higher. The state tends to use the average, but the average is pulled up by some large properties, but we'll, we'll look at that as well. What we're really talking about here tonight are the yellow bars. Those represent the combined impact of these two projects, of foster and public safety. But I do want to point out the orange bars in the middle. The orange bars represent, just because we didn't want to ignore it and pretend like it wasn't there, the orange bars represent that $4.9 million override as kind of the current FY '24 deficit. If we were to fill that with an override, that's what the orange bars represent for this median taxpayer. So you can see for that, it starts around $417 a year and grows by the normal 2.5% increase, just like the blue bars. The orange bar would be a permanent tax increase and would essentially become part of the blue bar if that's approved. But that's not a decision before the town until the spring. So tonight, we're really looking at the yellow bars here. And again, they're smaller. This is for foster and the public safety facility. In year one, which would be FY '24, it's $176 total for both projects, again, for the median taxpayer. In 2025, it's $409. And those first two years look lower because that's just the interest on the bands. When you do the band for the first two years, you only have to make interest payments. The long-term debt service would hit then in '26, so that's why it jumps up to $755. And you can see from there, it kind of stays in the mid-700 range over time, dropping down to about $700. This is before we apply the unassigned fund balance. So again, I'll toggle between, we discussed before applying that $7 million. So you can see here, in FY '25, instead of $409 for that year, it becomes $324. In FY '26, instead of $755 for the year, it becomes $501. FY '27, instead of $746, it becomes $578. And FY '28, instead of $737, it becomes $653. So the goal is to try to just smooth that initial increase so that there's not a particular peak in the early years. Any questions on that before I keep moving? Because I feel like we're looking at a lot of different charts here.
Nope.
So then we wanted to, we incorporated some of the data that the Sustainable Budget Task Force looked at in terms of how does Hingham compare to our benchmark communities? So this next slide, well, we were just talking about the median taxpayer, who is around $700,000. The state collects data on the average single-family tax bill, and that assessed value is over $900,000. It's 915 or 920. So this is a little bit different than what we just looked at. But for FY '22, the most recent data available from the state puts Hingham in the middle of our pack of the 20 communities, a little bit to the right, but in the center. And we, in all of these charts, we don't like to be an outlier. We don't want to be too far on the left or too far on the right. So we took this data and we tried to do kind of a rough approximation. We rolled everyone forward by 2.5% from '22, four times, to get to FY '26, kind of a projection. So if we roll everyone forward, those are the blue bars and the yellow bar, like including ourselves, again, for the average single-family tax home. This doesn't include CPA surcharges, so it's likely understated. And it also doesn't include any other towns doing a debt exclusion or an override in the next four years because we don't know what those plans are. So it's relatively conservative by that measure. But if we take our, you know, this new projected FY '26, the yellow bar, and we add on to it from John's model what the tax impact would be for both the, both foster, public safety, and this $4.9 million override, it moves us to this, this green shaded bar, which essentially moves Hingham two places to the left of where we would be if nothing's approved. And we wanted to look at this to make sure that we weren't launching ourselves all the way to the left and kind of doing something that we would think would be unreasonable based on our peer groups. But this tells us, especially since it's conservative, that what we're still doing is in line with our other communities. So it's not unreasonable by this measure.
Michelle, if I can just, tell me if I got this right. So that if Hingham was the only town that was going to do these debt exclusions and overrides, that's what you're showing?
That's right. For the next four years, if we were the only ones that did this, we would move slightly to the left, but still remain in the middle. And we know, you know, you can look historically, other towns, of course, are, are doing similar debt exclusions or considering overrides. But we wanted to, to double-check this. So we also pulled from the Sustainable Budget Task Report our average single-family tax bill compared to per, to income per capita. That's how the state collects it. We wanted to look at, compared to your income, you know, how much of a burden is the tax bill? And how do we compare to our benchmark communities? This is one of the places where we are on the lower end of the scale. So relative to this, you know, peer group of communities, our single-family tax bill is a much smaller percentage of our per capita income, which, which speaks to potentially the capacity to pay here if we do these increases. We also wanted to look back, same from the report, how our average single-family tax bill has trended over time relative to our benchmark communities. So this chart shows 15 years. Where the blue line and the red line shows the average of the 19 communities. So we've trended, trended with them over time. We've always been slightly below the average. But you can see in the most recent years that there's a bit of a widening of the gap there. And then if you zoom in on Hingham for the last 15 years and you look at how our per capita income has changed compared to how our single-family tax bill has grown over time, you can see that this gap widened significantly. The tax bill is the blue line at the bottom that has grown at a much slower pace compared to the red line, which is the, which is income growing at the top of the chart. But with all that in mind, we still know that for some folks, these tax impacts are going to represent a squeeze. And Tom's going to talk about the many ways in which the town is cognizant of this and, and different resources that we've tried to put in place to mitigate the impacts, especially for those who might feel it the most.
Right. Thank you, Michelle. So, you know, like Michelle said, we recognize that this is a potential significant tax increase. And we wanted to assure everyone that there are many approaches that we use to mitigate those impacts. Not the least of which are these items here that I'll speak to. The various tax exemptions that Michelle's going to go into here in a minute, the next slide. But, you know, one of the big ones that we speak to on a regular basis is our AAA tax, is our AAA credit rating. That allows us to ensure that we're getting the smallest, minimizes the, the interest cost of all of our borrowings whenever we issue these things. And that's for our annual bands. That's for, for instance, the, the water company that we did, the water company borrowing that we issued a few years back for, that's paid for by ratepayers. But nonetheless, we want to minimize those costs to our ratepayers. So the AAA credit rating is really key to everything that we do in terms of minimizing tax, tax impacts to our residents. I also wanted to point out, as I've said now a couple of times, the use of unassigned fund balance has been a known factor that we were going to apply to this, that, those savings to these projects when they came up. That's been a plan for many years, a commitment made and, and lived to. And now here we are at that stage, and we're actually able to, to apply a significant amount of money to offset the, those impacts in those early years. You know, we also are toying with the idea of creating stabilization funds, additional stabilization funds, both for these, these two capital projects as well as future capital projects. And even for potentially to, to try to mitigate against future overrides beyond the one that we're speaking of this, this April. So we're looking at stabilization funds to, again, try to help us continue to afford local government, but also do it in as affordable a way as possible. And the last thing I'll note is there's a model. There's, we're not the only town that's doing this. There's a, a number of towns that are out there and have been doing these for several years. There's a model available that often speaks to commitments made by multiple boards in town to try to, try to commit to a conservative approach to governing when it comes to using taxpayer dollars. And those commitments are often made by the select board as its lead entity, but by the school committee. In many towns, it's called the finance committee, but our advisory committee. All should be partners in that type of a commitment. And we'll be, we'll be approaching all of those boards with, with this idea as we approach and get into the, the Springtown meeting as, as it would relate to the, to the override at the, at the Springtown meeting vote. So there's a number of ways that we're, we're really trying to control costs going forward. But one of the, one of the most obvious is the next slide that Michelle will speak to.
Thank you. So we've been before this board talking about some of our outreach efforts in terms of the tax relief programs that the town offers. But what this slide shows you is a quick snapshot of the different relief programs that we do offer. There's more than these 12. If you look at number seven, for example, there's various exemptions within one. But the right side tells you the maximum benefit for FY '23. And if you keep in mind the numbers that we just showed you in terms of the median taxpayer impact, if folks qualify for these programs, they can certainly help offset some, if not all, of the projected increases, depending on what you qualify for. We put together this whole group this year with some engaged citizens, with our assessing and elder services departments. And we focused a lot so far on number two here, the senior means tested tax exemption. I want to call out for a second because it's new. This is something that only a handful of Massachusetts communities offer. It's something that the select board several years ago- It's something that the Select Board several years ago advocated for and pushed through. And it took us special legislation to do, but now we're in our second year of offering it. And some of the value of this is, for most, for all the other exemptions on the list, you can only qualify for one. But the senior means tested, you can qualify for this one and another one. So that is a really important value added to the people that qualify for this. We made a concerted effort this summer ahead of the September first deadline to get the word out. Last year, we got twenty-four applications, twenty of which were approved. This year, we got ninety-six. So we were able to do a three-hundred-percent increase in applicants. And hopefully, like right now, the Board of Assessors is going through all those applications to see who actually qualifies. But that's a wonderful result of trying to get the word out and make sure that people know that these resources are available. We're going to kind of repeat the same type of campaign. Most of these other programs you see are exemptions on the slide. The deadline is April first, so our group will get back together this winter and kind of launch a whole second arm of the campaign to try to increase participation and awareness of these other programs that we offer. But we really are trying to get the word out, especially as we're asking people to make these investments in town. We want to make sure that they know these programs are also there for them.
Great. So I'll sum up with our last slide. No applause necessary, on that note. So our next, you know, our next steps in this process are, we're getting to the point where we're going to be issuing the warrant soon. In advance of that, the second floor, so our permitting boards, Conservation Commission and the Planning Board are finalizing their permitting efforts with regards to the Foster School. We just received the permit from the Planning Board for the Public Safety Facility. They do not need to go to Conservation. There's no jurisdiction for that facility, for that board. So we've received the permitting we needed for Public Safety. Foster's in the midst of that process right now. They are continuing to engage in value engineering for both projects. The Foster School is actively engaged as they go through their permitting process and value engineering and attempting to bring down the costs of that, of those projects, of that project. I will say that the Public Safety Facility had a successful value engineering effort through their design effort, where they lowered the cost of that project down by over thirteen percent, which was a great outcome. And of course, there'll be additional value engineering done during the construction phase, as there always is in these projects. So then, the Select Board and the Advisory Committee will be taking votes with regards to their, what we call the favorable action votes, a yea or nay to the favorable action votes with regards to all three articles. Again, construction costs for Foster, constructions costs for Public Safety, and then the use of excess fund balance as a stabilization fund for, to offset the tax impact for both projects. Those are the three articles that you'll all be voting for or voting on. The, we'll be creating a tax impact calculator to help residents understand their impact of these projects for themselves. We will be, I'm calling it an outreach blitz here in October. We're going to, we have three public information sessions planned. We have six tours planned for all three facilities. We are in the throes, I think we released, under Art's supervision, we released, I believe, our sixth video of an eleven-video series just today. And those will continue. So there's a relatively significant outreach effort being made that will continue to educate and with the goals of educating the public on the questions that will be put before them at Special Town Meeting on November first. Then we'll be, from there, believe it or not, we go right into the budget season. No rest for the weary, for sure. And that's, I'll be issuing my budget memo as in mid-October, and that's where we are. So then we start that process. And as we always do, that's a thoughtful, conservative process to make sure that we're getting our biggest bang for the buck with regards to the budget and our services that we provide to the residents. So then, here we go, coming into November first for the Special Town Meeting, followed by the ballot vote on November eighth. So those are the next steps, as I see them. And then I guess we could talk about, you know, the Spring Town Meeting vote is coming up after that in April. Okay? And that's all we had.
Well, Michelle and Tom, thank you. That was excellent. Really appreciate it. I know a lot of work went into that, and want to thank you for that. That was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
So great job. And I, and I thank you for the work you're doing with the outreach program as well. So I appreciate you for it. So I have a couple of questions, so I'll lead off with my questions, and I'll turn to Liz. So a couple of residents have asked me about the tax impact calculator. So when do you think that's going to be up and running, and when do you think that might be ready to go?
I would say in the next couple of weeks, for sure. That might be in the outside, it might be earlier than that. We have to, we have to work this, some, it's doing some complex things. It will be reaching in, we're hoping to do it by, so that the, what we're hoping the design will be that the resident will be able to type in their address and get their anticipated tax impact of the two debt exclusions. So we're working, we're working through that, but it's got to, as you can imagine, it's got to reach into a model that wasn't designed to be reached into like that. So we got to, we're going to have to combine the two. And I'm sure someone, perhaps other than myself, will be responsible for that. But as soon as that can be done, it will be done, and we'll be posting that to the website, I imagine, sometime in the next week or two.
Maybe what we could do, if, once we have it up around it, we could show people how to do it at one of our meetings.
Of course, absolutely.
That might be helpful, once we have it up.
Definitely.
We could do the, a meeting like this where it's hybrid and show people what we're doing, so that's great.
Great.
Okay, next question. Michelle, you might be able to answer this, or maybe Janet. So you mentioned, over the course of the next, of three years into the process, we would go back to market three years to borrow. Can we refinance?
Yes.
You can. So municipal borrowing, is it kind of like a mortgage?
Good question.
Yeah.
I'll let Janet speak to it.
Okay. Janet, yeah, so did you have my question?
Sure, I did, yes. You know, we have a number of options, you know, well, we wanted to give you a framework, a starting point, and some projections, but we certainly have options in financing. You know, the town can stay in vans for as long as it likes. So to the extent that short-term rates are attractive, we don't have to convert to bonds in a few years. We could stay in short-term notes, one-year instruments, and keep rolling them over. When we convert to bonds, there is typically a period of time where you cannot prepay or refinance. It's a no-call period, and that's generally eight years. We structure those very successfully with eight-year no-call periods. At the eight-year mark, you, and thereafter, you can always refinance for savings. And most oftentimes, we do find opportunities to refinance after the call period for savings.
Great, thank you. And I guess, Michelle, you might answer this question. You know, this board has made a commitment to our seniors to invest in a new senior center at some point. So could you maybe bring up the chart about investing in other capital projects down the road and how that would work? Because, and I'm committed to that, to doing that, making an investment and improving our senior center. And maybe just talk about that, how that would work with the recommended course of action that you and Tom are proposing that we follow, or that we take into consideration.
Sure. And Tom, I think, spoke to this a little bit in the beginning about our need to be more proactive about some of these investments in infrastructure and the cyclical nature of needing to make these investments. But part of what's leading is to look at this recommended structure, where it creates a bit more capacity in the out-years, is knowing that there's things like the senior center or the Harbor Wharf walls coming online in the next several years. And those are the two projects that are likely in front of us the quickest. So those are something that we would plan on folding into the schedule when they're ready in the next several years.
To that end, I'll just point out that, if you'll remember, I think it might have been upwards of three town meetings ago, we had an authorization of close to a half-million dollars to do a design, an architectural design study of how to build, how we could build out the existing senior center space into the police, into the police department space currently occupied by the police department. We'll be starting that work. We're actually in the midst right now of procuring an architect to do that study. We won't engage them until and if the town decides to fund a public safety facility, because we didn't want to spend that five-hundred-thousand dollars if the police weren't going to vacate that space. So as soon as we know that that is going to happen, if in fact it does, we'll engage that architect. They'll come up with some design ideas of what the expanded senior center might look like, and then give us a sense of the size of that, of that effort, of the cost of that effort. So that's all coming here in the next six months or so. Six to eight months, maybe a year, depending on the architect and what they need to do. So pending on the size, it's a, it's a, it's an expansion of a pre-existing space. We're not looking at a forty-million-dollar senior center. This is not a standalone building. It's fitting out an existing space. So I'm not expecting it to be an outrageously large amount. I'd hate to characterize a guest, because I haven't, the architect hasn't done that work yet. But I'm not expecting it to be outrageously large. It wouldn't surprise me if it was in the ballpark of those little red lines up there, related to the pool.
Okay. And my last, and my last comment, your last slide up, Tom, had a bullet point on a commitment of a framework regarding gold controls to mitigate the need for future overrides. And just wanted to put out there that the leadership of this board, the School Committee and Advisory has had a preliminary discussion on that.
Great.
We do understand the challenges ahead this year and more to follow there. But certainly, we're talking about those, the need for that framework, and we're going to be discussing more as the year progresses.
Great.
All right, with that, I'll turn to Liz.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Tom. Great presentation. Great job. There's a lot of information here. So maybe just to go back and review kind of some basics for people. Can you talk about the total borrowing amount?
The total, yes, let me go back to. The total amount that we're planning to borrow for these projects is, if you look under number two here, it's this one-thirty-nine-point-six-million-dollar number. So we, while we need to seek town meeting authorization, as Tom explained, for the full Foster amount of one-thirteen, we're only anticipating borrowing the eighty-eight million after you subtract the grant. And Rick Manley always reminds us that the MSBA-required bolt language that we use actually reduces our authorization by the amount of the grant we receive. So we can only borrow that eighty-eight million at the end of the day. We just have to receive authorization for the full amount. But that goes into the one-thirty-nine, as does, I think it was Joe's question before, about pulling in the spring authorizations into that amount as well.
Right. So we're expecting up to twenty-five million for the MSBA reimbursement. So that, that number obviously will change, depending on what that comes back at, right?
Depending on what comes back.
What the actual grant's amount is.
That's right. And we spoke with Ray Essies about that, about using the twenty-five-million-dollar one for now. That is tied to the one-thirteen-dollar amount. But over time, it could be, you know, plus or minus a little bit.
Right, okay. And I know we've talked about, we do have some flexibility in terms of when we borrow and how much we borrow. Can you talk a little bit about that process for issuing the debt? Does it come back in front of this board each time, or can you just outline that for us?
Sure. And Janet can jump in here as well. Typically, the town has issued or gone to the market once a year, and we typically do it each May. And right now, we do have some bands that will be, that will be needing to go back out to market for in May. But Janet helped us look at the cash flow projections for the two construction cycles for both projects that we got from the building committees and the OPMs. And she's helping us estimate how much we would need between now and this May. And it's too much money for the town to float without borrowing. So we were talking initially about doing an interim borrowing this December. So our plan would be to likely go to market this December to do a short-term ban to get through next December. And we're talking about changing our cycle to align with December's going forward. So likely for these three projects, it would be December of two thousand and twenty-two, December of two thousand and twenty-three, and December of two thousand and twenty-four. And under these scenarios, the December twenty-two and twenty-three borrowings would be the bands, the short-term notes. By December twenty-four, the projects would be finishing up, and we would have, we'd likely know basically the full amount that we would need to spend by then, and would feel more comfortable bonding the whole amount by then. Again, get like, depending on what the market looks like. But those would be the three anticipated borrowings right now.
Okay, great. And just in terms of the interest rate assumptions that have been built into the model, we're talking about, we said between three and a half and five percent. Is that right?
That is. But Janet, would you like to speak to those assumptions?
Sure, yeah. Again, we take a look at the current market conditions. So I can tell you, just to give you some anecdotal information, we sold bond anticipation notes this week, as well as tax anticipation notes this week. They came in around three percent. In terms of longer-term issues, we sold for a triple-A municipality, a small bond issue this week, under five million, twenty years, came in at about three sixty. So that's where the market is today. As I mentioned, when we look at the projections, we try to be conservative and looking at the market, adding a little cushion for ban rates, given that we might not be in the market for a couple more months. And then also adding a cushion in terms of projections for a longer-term bond issue. Differs a little bit between the scenarios, but when we're looking at those thirty-year scenarios, it's, the projections that we are using are a little bit in excess of five percent, like, they're about five fifteen.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. And can you go to the slide that shows the, kind of what we're recommending, right? I think is the thirty-year term, the hybrid debt service, which I think is important, and I'm glad we looked at this as an option and not having to do the same sort of structure for both projects necessarily. Can you just talk about how complex this is to manage? Does it add any complexity to the staff to have to kind of deal with this sort of debt structure?
I don't believe so. And Janet, Rick can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we go to market each year, that issuance includes a number of projects. So we have CPA projects, we have water projects, we do have some, you know, some of the projects that we've done here in the past, previous school projects. It's not that we're issuing a separate bond for each project that we're talking about. It's one big issuance with different projects within that. So it's more, I think the most helpful thing for us and internally for staff is when we go long-term, we lock in that debt service, and that just makes it easier for us to put on a schedule and know what the debt service will be in the out-years. When we're in the short-term ban range, we just get that interest rate for the next year. And then it's hard to predict in the future, like what to put in our schedule and what to plan for. And part of the thought behind potentially realigning our timing with the market to December is that would allow us to get, when we're in the bands, get the interest rates, know the debt service payments for the coming fiscal year, and be able to budget for it. Whereas right now, when we go to market in May, we've already put the budget together for the coming year. So it's harder to, you know, we just have less certainty about the short-term rates that we're going to get.
Okay. Okay, good. I think this, though, we've talked a little bit about this, but it's a balance of minimizing the tax impact for citizens, but also kind of managing the total cost of the project. So that's kind of what, that's what I like about this scenario. In terms of the potential override and the FY twenty-four deficit, can you just, again, just confirm what, how you came to that number?
Sure. So well, the next item on the agenda is the FY twenty-four forecast update. But so we've done a very preliminary forecast right now, just because we're having all these conversations. Typically, our first forecast might come out around November. But just to get an idea of where we are right now for the, for the initial deficit, we wanted to be able to use that number to talk about, if we tried to fill the gap to maintain what we have right now, what would that look like? And that's where we're coming out at the moment with the four-point-nine-million dollars.
Okay. Great, thank you. No other questions right now. Thank you.
Joe?
Yes. Really a great presentation. It's, it shows the kind of work that's been put It's, it shows the kind of work that's been put in. You know, we've been at it for, what, an hour or so? And the hours, the days, the weeks that went into this, it really shows. So, so thank you. Couple of questions. Can we go back to the, this chart, which is the interest rate spread? Nope, that, yep. So a couple of things. So we're talking about considering 20 versus 30-year. What we have here, though, are, we've got a 15 and 30-year. And so what I'm looking for is the spread between the 20-year and the 30-year. Because going, that spread would indicate the interest rate cost, the additional interest rate associated with the longer term. Looking at the 15 to 30-year, there's not a lot of difference. And I'm assuming that if we were comparing 20-year versus 30-year, it'd be even closer. Those lines would be closer. So Janet, maybe, is that something that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a great observation. And I think you might be able to see it a little better on the next chart, which admittedly is only for this year.
Right.
But the difference between 25, 20, 25, and 30, that long end of the curve, or those top three lines, very minimal difference in terms of yield.
Yeah.
Whereas of course, that spread is greater on the shorter entries.
Yep. So, I mean, I think as we make the policy decision, it'd be helpful to have the multi-year chart actually reflect the 20-year, so we can really see that spread. But it, you know, the lesson here is that there, the cost of going from a 20 to a 30-year in terms of interest rate is likely to be quite small, and the benefit to our residents quite large. So I think that's, that's an important factor. The other thing, if you could, that's the, go back to the multi-year from, yep, that's it. So the other thing is looking at the gap between the short-term one-year versus the 30-year. And in some cases, that gap is substantial. In other cases, that gap is quite small. And so that, I assume, would give us guidance. So when the gap is really small, that's when we make the jump from the one-year to the 30-year. Because there's virtually no change, no interest rate costs associated with making that change. So Janet, is that, is that something that you, you look at in terms of advising us as to when to make the jump?
Yeah, yeah, we certainly do. We keep an eye on interest rates and the relationship of long-term and short-term rates. Right now, we're in a period of some uncertainty in the short-term. You might have heard the phrase rate inversion that's happened a couple of times this year, wherein the two-year treasury actually exceeded the 10-year treasury. Right now, as I mentioned, ban rates have gone up more dramatically than longer-term rates. So again, just as a comparison, we're selling one-year note rates right now for 3%. Last year, last summer, we were probably selling them for less than 20 basis points, less than one-fifth of 1%. And long-term rates are still under 4%. We're looking at 20-year money, again, for AAA, we sold this, this week at about 360. So a very narrow gap right now between ban rates and longer-term rates, given some market uncertainty in terms of direction of interest rates.
Michelle, could you go to, which is the exhibit, you know, structure B, either one? And so, because I'm going to focus on the blue, which is if we do nothing. So if, assuming no, no override, no nothing, just, so, and I'm looking at the change going from 2004 to 20, 24 to 25, then 26, just a change in the blue. And I assumed that that would be governed by Prop 2.5. But I'm seeing that the numbers don't follow the 2.5. So going from 24 to 25, it's a 2.55. Going from 20, 25 to 26, it's 3%. And so those percentage changes in the blue, which is having nothing to do with any, any override or debt exclusion, are varying by more than the 2.5%. So why, why is that?
Sure. So, and I'll let John Asher jump in at the end of this, too. There's the 2.5% increase, Prop 2.5. There's the CPA surcharge on top of that. But the blue also reflects the rest of our existing excluded debt. So those blue bars from the previous one that are sort of declining over time. And it reflects our projections for the pool in here. So that's what's, that's part of what's making it jump more than the 2.5, if that makes sense.
Yeah, because as we go out, like 2027 to 28, it actually is only 2.4%. So.
And some of that might be because the existing excluded debt service is retiring over time. It's part of that.
I didn't realize that the Honorable John Asher was on the line here.
Well, I'll just jump in and say, everything that Michelle said is accurate. And I would add that the tax rate without debt exclusion or any override is also affected by the growth in the assessed value of the asset. And we're using the assessors' averages for the last 11 years. So that, that would impact it as well, John.
Well, just on that point, so if everyone's asset grew by 15%, that would not affect taxes.
That's correct, but they don't.
Right, but. Right, but since we're looking at.
Commercial grows differently than residential.
Yep.
Real personal property.
But looking at the median, I would have assumed that that would have not played a major factor here.
Yeah, I don't think it is, but it is a factor, but not a major one.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And staying on that graph, or that bar chart, and picking up on Bill's point with respect to the senior center. This town is making a commitment to the seniors. And I think that commitment and the certainty of committing funds to the senior center is as strong as the commitment to having an override. So I think if we're going to show the override here, I think I would want to have another bar that would show, and I know we don't have a dollar amount.
That's the problem, we don't know what size it will be.
So, but I, the absence of that suggests a lack of commitment. And I don't want that communicated. What needs to be communicated is we are committed to our seniors, that this is a project that is going to happen. And if it takes, you know, something to give us a ballpark range, I think we need to include it. And I appreciate that, again, we have an absence of data, which makes it difficult. But that absence of data should not be perceived in any way as an absence of commitment.
Sure, going forward, we can speak about how to portray that.
Yeah. But this was really just a superb presentation. Thank you. That's it.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? All right, I do not see anyone with a raised hand. Okay. All right, I want to again thank Michelle, Tom, for all your hard work here. Janet and Rick, thank you for joining us this evening as well. And John, always good to have your input as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is going along the same theme here, is the FY '24 preliminary financial forecast. And Tom, who's going to take us through this?
I'll do this.
Okay, all right.
Always risky to do this without Sue Nickerson in the room to kick me when I say something. She wishes I didn't, but that's her. All right, so the F, so every year, we do a forecast document going into our next budget cycle. Obviously, we're well in advance of that. We would normally do this in November-ish timeframe. We wanted to do it now because we were trying to understand at least a ballpark of what type of deficit we were looking at for, so that we can inform the public of what they might see in the coming, in the spring, as they make their decisions on what to do in the fall. So again, in an effort to inform the public, we are well in advance of where we normally would be with a forecast. For instance, we don't even have the first quarter data yet from FY '23, and we're projecting what we're going to do in '24. Very difficult to do, but we gave it a shot. So that said, every year, so you see our, our anticipated total tax levy for FY '24 is $98.5 million. That's in large part built off of the prior year, as it always is. The prior year's levy, plus the 2.5% increase allowed by Prop 2.5, and any new growth. So, and that's, that's really what we're, what we're looking at to get to that $98 million. We, you'll note that the, that we have no, no override anticipated as of, in this, in this document. And that's in part what drives our bottom-line deficit. So regarding other revenue, we're projecting the state aid at 2.5%. Again, at this early stage, that seemed like a reasonable number. It is not far from the historic, historic averages. We have adjusted our local receipts as we felt we, we could, we could do so safely. And we've discussed it with the entirety of the forecast group. And everyone understood what we were doing and how we got to those, to those local receipt numbers. And ultimately, what, where we get to with, with our other revenue is another $41 million, $41.8 million, bringing us to a total sources of $140.4 million. You'll see that number in the middle there. And then we balance that against our anticipated uses. As of right now, we're anticipating a, a total, a total state assessment overlay and other expenses, deficits, or excuse me, usage of $2.2 million. You couple that with the real, with the real budget of the $143 million, which is made up of Articles 6, 4, 5, and 6, which, which projects a total municipal side increase of 3%. That is salaries and expenses, and 3.5% for school-side increases. And again, we've, we've, there've been no commitments made to date, but those are the preliminary estimates. And we presented that to the forecast group, which includes all, you know, members of the school, the school department, school committee, the select board, our department, et cetera. So that's kind of where we come out right now. That's leading us down to that bottom number. And what we had discussed about in our prior presentation of a 4.88, $4.88 million deficit going into the FY '24 budget, budget season.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Joe?
Yes, and I don't know to what extent you can factor this in right now. But the, at least the news that I've seen is that the state has an historic $3.6 billion budget surplus that they're going to have to distribute. So I don't know to what extent Hingham will be able to participate in that. And to what extent that will filter down to the numbers that we're looking at.
I will say that in the early stages, we generally don't project state aid at 2.5%. We have because we're anticipating, anticipating getting at least that. So if that answers your question in any way, we are anticipating a boost in state aid this year for sure, for that reason.
And any, any big federal money coming down the bank?
Well, there's always projects, the, it's not the Ouija Act, what?
The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act?
Internal joke. The Infrastructure Act, it does provide for federal funds for a number of projects. They are project-specific and require applications. So we can't project them the way we could with some of the CARES and ARPA funds. But, but we'll certainly, you know, go after all federal dollars like we always do.
Great, thanks. Nothing else.
Yep.
Liz?
Well, thank you for putting this out early. I know it's uncomfortable because we don't have a lot of information, but I think it is important for the public to get a sense of what's coming and, you know, what the override might look like. What are the, the next steps? Can you just outline how often the forecast group is meeting and when there'll be more refined data?
Sure. I would expect that we would see a second draft of the forecast in late November, maybe early December, that timeframe. At that stage, we'll have a bit more data. We'll have some more information hopefully from the state. Maybe in January is when we tend to get the, the excise, motor vehicle excise numbers coming in. We'll have, late November or November-ish, we'll start to get the first quarter from '23 and be able to make some, some assessments or some progress, projections there, a little bit more accurately.
Good, thank you.
Liz, if I can just jump on that. So is this forecast, the forecast that we'll be going to town meeting with? The special town meeting?
Yes, yes, that's right. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Meaning the projected override.
Right, to the extent that there are questions about the forecast, this, this is the latest that we'll have for that town meeting?
That's right.
The special town meeting.
The forecast usually would come up in the budget discussion, and there won't be a budget before the meeting.
Right, okay.
But to the extent we are projecting an override for the spring and as it informs people's decisions, that's why we wanted to do this.
Got it.
Right, but we won't be voting on the budget in November.
That's right.
Sorry.
Okay. Could you go to the big picture, see if anybody has any questions? If anybody has any questions, could you please just raise your hand or just wave to me? All right, seeing no one?
Literally no one.
We do have people here, but no one's asking a question. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. So let me see if anybody has any public comment this evening. If anybody has any public comment, please use the raise hand function or just physically raise your hand, wave at me real quick. Seeing none. Last item on the agenda is town administrator and select board reports. So let me start this evening with Art.
Thank you.
You know, why don't you come up to the mic? Yeah, come up to the, if you have something.
Just a couple of items, I'll keep it brief.
First, as, as Tom mentioned earlier, we are working through an effort to get the word out regarding the special town meeting. And the focus on the videos has been a consuming one. But I just want to note that we've had a lot of support from a lot of different folks in, in town hall and also on the school side to make them come together. I'm more of the orchestrator, but a lot of the content, a lot of the thoughtfulness and a lot of the final product is really dependent on a lot of other folks. So I just wanted to, to share that. Just two other items quickly. I just want to let folks know that the sustainable, Sustainability Coordinator, RFP, is back on the street. After, after releasing the first round, we got, we learned of several parties that downloaded the RFP, but nobody responded. What I did was work with several folks to get to understand why folks didn't actually respond to the RFP. We posted some changes and it's, it's online today with responses due back on the 28th. So we're optimistic that we'll have a response at that time. And lastly, I just want to just follow up and let folks know that our, our next blood drive is scheduled for next Wednesday, the 21st, in our senior center from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. As of this writing, we have 30 of 38 appointment slots full, and we're hoping to fill the rest over the next day or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Art, Liz?
No questions, thank you, Art.
No questions.
All right, thanks very much, appreciate it. All right, let me turn to Michelle.
Sure, I just have one item tonight. So the town has been gauging, been engaging in a lot of outreach efforts ahead of the special town meeting, ahead of the election. And the town clerk just asked that we remind folks that we have a great feature on our website. Let me just show you. For people, if you haven't signed up already for our notify me function, we send out a lot of information about programs in town, special events coming up, election information, et cetera, through this feature on our website, through a general kind of announcements and events signup. So if you go to our homepage that you can see here, click on this notify me button. We're trying to make sure that people are signed up here so they can get the most up-to-date information. So there's a, depending on what you're interested in, there's all sorts of different things you can sign up for. So you can sign up for the senior center newsletter, senior center specific alerts, et cetera. You can pick specific committees that you're interested in getting their agendas when posted. But I think the most important one. But I think the most important one, you have to scroll down a little bit, or a lot, is down here, is this Hingham General News and Announcements one. And if you sign up for this, every time we, the town sends out a message, it's including our special town meeting videos that Art's been working on, the recreation department summer program lineup, a number of different things. This is the best way, or one of the best ways to get the information that we're putting out on a regular basis. And we really are communicating a lot more frequently now, now that we have a communications team helping us do that. So we just wanted to encourage people to use that function and make sure they're getting all of our messages to stay up-to-date on town affairs. That's it.
Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Yes, so I just want to be clear and I know the answer for this. People can sign up, we don't sell their, their email, it's not, they're not all of a sudden gonna get ads from Google or who knows what. It stays with the town, is that correct?
That is correct.
And second, and this applies to me, if you subscribe to too many of those, is there an unsubscribe button?
Yes.
And you can get off.
It's the same way when you come in here, you just have to put your email address in and it will show you what you're subscribed for, so you can uncheck if you're, if you're no longer interested.
People should have no hesitance to do this. It'll keep, it'll be staying with the town and if they don't like it, they can change it.
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you for showing that.
That's it for me tonight, thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Bill. I do have a statement I'd like to read relating to the planned pool project at the Country Club. So I wanted to update you on a new development with the pool project at the South Shore Country Club. On September seventh, the town received an appeal of the two permits issued for the project by the town's planning board, which were a site plan review and a special permit. The planning board's permits were appealed in the land court by some property owners who live near the South Shore Country Club. The town is reviewing the appeal. However, we believe that the planning board's permits were properly granted. As the town defends the appeal, there may be a delay in beginning the construction of the new pool. We will give you a further update once we know more.
Tom, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any select board updates tonight? Joe?
Actually, I, I don't want to steal Liz's thunder, so in terms of the harbor.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll just talk about one thing, which was I attended the, I almost said Fourth of July, but it wasn't the Fourth of July, it was, what was it, September?
September tenth.
September tenth event that the Hingham Maritime Center put on, which was superb, fundraising event for Hingham Maritime Center and a great opportunity not only to support the Maritime Center, but to see the fireworks. I am an active member there and I will tell you that I will be on the water at Hingham Harbor at six AM tomorrow. So this meeting is gonna have to end fairly soon so I can get home and get to bed for that. But it was really a remarkable event and part of a much larger event going on in Hingham Harbor that I will defer to Liz on. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. So Hingham Harbor Day was September tenth. It kicked off with a ribbon-cutting ceremony officially opening the Hingham Boat Ramp. I'd like to thank the previous select board members, volunteers, Harbor Master Ken Corson, who envisioned a safer and more accessible harbor, and all those who worked so hard to bring it to fruition, including Senator Stephen Lynch, Lieutenant Governor Polito, State Representative Joe Moschino, State Senator Patrick O'Connor, Department of Fisheries Commissioner Ron Amadon, Doug Cameron of the Office of Fishing and Boating Access, Mike Count of FOATH Engineering, Brett Sherry, Civil Engineer and Special Use Permit Coordinator, ACK, and Town Engineer J.R. Frye. Mrs. Nally, wife of the late Mike Nally, a beloved Hingham resident who was instrumental in the boat ramp project thirty-five years ago, as well as the new boat ramp, did the honors of cutting the ribbon with Harbor Master Ken Corson. It was a wonderful community day, full of music, food and games, culminating with an impressive fireworks display. Special thanks to Mark Cassell, the Lions Club, volunteers and sponsors. Also, thank you to the Hingham Harbor Development Committee, trustees of the Hingham Bathing Beach, Hingham Lions Club, Hingham Maritime Center, along with dozens of other town departments, sponsors and volunteers who made the day possible. I also wanted to thank the Fire Department, specifically Deputy Chief Levinson, for leading us in a solemn remembrance ceremony on September eleventh, which we celebrated the next morning. Also, if I, you'll indulge me to just do a little update on affordable housing. I know we've heard a little bit about that this evening, but I do want to thank formerly Amy Farrell for her tireless efforts and fierce advocacy of affordable housing in Hingham. Through her leadership, we have made progress on several properties as well as position the trust and Lincoln School Apartments Board of Managers, both organizationally and financially, to continue their important work. Amy recently stepped down as Chair and Jack Falvey is leading the Affordable Housing Trust and Matt Dillis is leading the LSA Board of Managers. As you know, two homes are being built by our partner, South Shore Habitat for Humanity. We have a few photos, I think, so you can see the progress. There will be two three-bedroom colonial houses on Whiting Street. Much work by town staff and volunteers, including former Chair Tim White, former Chair Amy Farrell, over the past five years have brought this to a reality. So two families will move in, are expected to move in this summer. There's also a golf fundraiser on October third. If people would like to get involved, you can go to habitatgolf22.givesmart.com to register. This was the, it was actually like a wall-raising ceremony that they did about a month ago. So, sure. So yeah, it's exciting, so definitely drive by. Thank you, that's it.
Outstanding, thank you. On Friday at the harbor, there will be a POW MIA memorial service, starts at seven PM in honor of POW MIA Day. The memorial is right, right near Stars. Hopefully, a lot of individuals can attend. It's generally attended by our Legion and our VFW. And again, it starts at seven PM on Friday. That's all I have. That, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor by real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, motion.